All right, we're good, Kim? All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you all for joining us. It's great to see folks here in the council chamber with us. We have Kim here in the BevCam booth. Thank you, Kim, making sure that we're live streaming so folks can join us at home or at their convenience. And before I officially call the meeting to order, I will run through the agenda so that we can have a sense of what's before us this evening. First, um, we did originally have a presentation scheduled for this from Kestrel Education Adventures. They've had to reschedule, unfortunately. One of the presenters is having an emergency with her dog, and so we'll wish them well, and we will hope for good health for her dog, and reschedule them as soon as possible. We do have two speakers to speak. We also have a mayoral proclamation that we'll be doing right at the beginning of our, our time together. And then we've got two public hearings, one at 7:30 and one at 7:45. We have some routine business to take care of. We'll take a break for some committee work, and then we'll come back and finish it all up. Oh, there's no volume? You're troubleshooting? Okay. Okay. We're having to keep that down. Is it better now, do you think? Okay. Okay. Okay.
How about now?
Now, I got it now.
Now?
Yeah, what happened?
I clicked a button.
What button did you click?
Speech volume. Thank you.
We'll see how it goes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Sure.
Uh, I know folks at home couldn't hear until just now, but in good news, all you were missing was me running through what's on the agenda. So we'll go through it and you'll be right with us. So with that, uh, let's go ahead and officially call to order this regular meeting of the Beverly City Council, Monday, February 3rd, 2025, 7 o'clock PM. May please call the roll. Bowen?
Here.
Crowley?
Here.
Feldman?
Here.
Houseman?
Here.
Rotundo?
Here.
Spang?
Here.
St. Hilaire?
Here.
Sweeney?
Here.
Flowers?
Here.
Thank you very much. Uh, Counselor Crowley, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And I'd ask everyone to remain standing in a moment of silence for John Casola, uh, retired Beverly Police Chief.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, everyone, for that moment of silence. Uh, Retired Police Chief Casola was one of our longest-serving Beverly Police Officers. He actually began as a Beverly Police Officer in 1962 and retired as chief in 2007. And, uh, and he died just recently on January 28th. So our thoughts are with, um, Chief Casola's family and friends, and, um, certainly an amazing life of service to his community. And so appreciated. Um, we do, as I mentioned, have a mayoral proclamation that the council has the opportunity to, um, to join in celebrating a young person in our city. So Mayor, I have that here if you'd like to go to the podium. Uh, we'll begin with that. If you would like.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, members of the council. It's good to see everybody. We are, in just a minute, going to honor and thank, um, Mr. Jonah Bellew, who is a Beverly resident and senior at Beverly High School, um, um, for something quite extraordinary. First, I want to make sure that we, um, recognize his family who are here tonight. We have his parents, Jay and Lori, his brother Owen, uh, his grandfather's Carl Kuyumjian and Jerry Bellew. And we have Anicio, Amy, and Amelia, who are, I'm guessing, aunt, uncle, and cousin. Thank you all for being here with us. So this is, um, really, it's a joint proclamation by all of us, by city councilors and me as mayor. And Council President and I will, um, jointly read it. So maybe we need Jonah to come up and join us. Why don't you come, yeah, you can stand right here with us, Jonah. To see you. All right.
Thank you, thanks for being here.
So, "Hear ye, hear ye! On behalf of the residents of the city of Beverly, it is my distinct honor to extend our sincere gratitude to Jonah Bellew." Jonah is a Beverly High School senior and last summer was an employee at Salty's Lobster Shack at Lynch Park. Jonah was working at Salty's on June 25th, 2024, when his manager started choking.
After telling a nearby person to call 911, Jonah quickly gave lifesaving aid by performing the Heimlich maneuver, clearing the obstruction, and saving the manager's life before emergency medical services or public safety arrived. Now, therefore, on behalf of the residents of the city of Beverly, on this third day of February 2025, it is our distinct honor to extend our heartfelt appreciation for Jonah's quick thinking and calm demeanor in a crisis, and our thanks for Jonah's service to the community as saving one another's life, one, as saving another's life is among the highest service that one can give.
In honor of this occasion, I, Michael P.K. Hill, Mayor, together with you, my colleagues on the Beverly City Council, hereby declare today, February 3rd, 2025, as Jonah Bellew Day in the city of Beverly. On behalf of an incredibly grateful community, Jonah, thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. I, I was not expecting that. That's, that's awesome. Uh, yeah, it was a crazy moment, you know? Obviously, I wasn't expecting it, but, uh, he, he was choking and he, like, signaled it and, um, thanks to my mother, she, uh, she taught me how to do the Heimlich when I was younger, and it just came back to me. And I, uh, instinctively just, like, called 911. It was, it was a crazy moment, but, uh, you know, I just thank her and everybody that was there with me that kept me calm and, you know? Thank you.
So Jonah, you get to take home the fancy version of that.
Thank you.
Uh, and Counselors, I would entertain a motion for a five-minute recess to allow Jonah and his family to, um, take pictures if they would like, and members of the council to congratulate Jonah as well. All those in favor? All right, we'll take a recess. Thank you very much, everyone. I'll call the full council back to order after that, that recess. And, uh, and thank you to the Bellew family for being here with us and to celebrate and to thank Jonah for, um, what certainly is, as, as was written in the proclamation, just such an act of service towards another person in the community and, um, quite a remarkable act to be able to stay calm and perform those lifesaving measures. So thank you and congratulations again to Jonah. Mr. Mayor, thank you for inviting the council to be part of that and, uh, hope Jonah will enjoy the rest of his now-named day. Uh, I am remiss in not mentioning that, uh, in addition to a few of our, uh, city staff who are here, who I'll introduce, our Assistant City Clerk, Ms. Dupont, is here with us this evening. Thank you, Ms. Dupont, for being here. Um, our City Clerk, Lisa Kent, has a family wedding this week, and so, uh, we'll be wishing Ms. Kent and her family well and glad to have Ms. Dupont here with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also wanted to mention and thank our city solicitor, Stephanie Williams, for being here with us. Thank you, Solicitor. And our City Council Budget Analyst, Mr. Jerry Perry, as well. Thank you, Mr. Perry. And of course, His Honor, the Mayor, is here as well, as we just saw. And our City Finance Director, Brian Ailes, is here with us. Thank you, Mr. Ailes. We do have two residents who have signed up to speak. Um, these are the comments by residents in the section of our regular meetings, which are available to folks if they want to sign up and speak. There are five spots for three minutes per speaker, um, at any of our regular meetings. And those can be signed up for by contacting the City Clerk's office no later than 9:30, the morning of the meeting. They are on a first-come, first-served basis. And if there is not a spot available, the Clerk's office will let folks know and let them know the next regular meeting date. Today, we do have two speakers who have signed up. And I always like to mention, just for those who are following along or who may not have seen this part of one of our meetings, that, uh, this is not a part of the meeting where you'll see counselors ask questions or interact back and forth, um, with those who are speaking. It's not, it's not a question-and-answer part of the meeting, but it's a really important part of the meeting. We really value having folks come and talk with us, share what they're concerned about or thinking about. And, um, just because you don't hear the council asking questions does not mean that we're not listening closely, and it often informs things that we think about and work on together at other times as well. So thank you to those who are here. We'll go in the order that they are signed up, and our first speaker signed up is Dr. Michael Spurber. Dr. Spurber, if you want to use the chair?
Please.
At the microphone? And, um, when you're ready, you can begin with your name and address for the record, despite the fact that I have given away your name. And, uh, Vice President Crowley will be our timekeeper. He'll keep time for both speakers to make sure that everyone has fair and equitable amount of time. It is three minutes. If you hear the timer go off, if you would just draw your remarks to a close.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Emily Dickinson asked me to tell Jonah, is he still here? Jonah is not here anymore? We'll skip it for the next time. My name is Mike Spurber. Is this loud enough?
Yes.
I live at 15 Olive Street in Beverly. And, uh, last time I was here, two weeks ago, was Martin Luther King's birthday. Uh, his words are still relevant, so I'll begin with his words. Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hatred cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. About 15-minute walk from here, in the, um, Beverly Commons, there's an abyss of, uh, darkness and hate. As you walk up the stairs to the spacious, uh, anterior of the gazebo, uh, you encounter a sign that is discriminatory and is, tends to, um, criminalize the homeless. It says, "No loitering." And, um, there's actually a, uh, a cognitive dissonance because the gazebo is for gazing. And if you can't loiter and gaze, you can't gaze. And so, uh, but the worst thing is the criminalization of the homeless. There's an alternative, I spoke with the president of the Rotarians who renovated the gazebo, and cost-free, they would be delighted to remove the "No loitering" sign. And, uh, they would replace with the, uh, City Council's approval, a welcome. And my thought would be that adjacent to the gazebo could be a model, uh, home for the homeless. I don't know whether people are aware around the corner from that gazebo is the birthplace of the Industrial Revolution. The Cabbots built a huge cotton mill, and the "No loitering" is a culmination, the haves telling the have-nots that they are criminalized for having not, which is immoral. And it's also very costly. Uh, it costs between $35,000 and $50,000 a year. The upkeep of the homeless, jail costs considerably, and there are some healthcare issues, uh, HIV and Hep C and tuberculosis. Depression, which causes homelessness, and homelessness causes depression. So that's kind of a vicious circle. So I'm going to end with the words of, uh, Dr. Martin Luther King. "A darkness cannot drive out darkness. Hate can, uh, only, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. Handcuffs cannot drive out homelessness. Only homes can do that, and with light and with love." Uh, thank you very much for letting me speak again.
Thank you very much, Dr. Spurber. Thank you for being here with us, Dr. Spurber. Our second speaker who signed up is Emily Hutchings. And Ms. Hutchings, if you'd like to go to the podium and begin with your name and address for the record, and then, uh, just as with Dr. Spurber, Vice President Crowley will keep the time for three minutes. And if you hear the timer, if you would just draw your remarks to a close. Thank you.
Thank you, President Flowers. My name is Emily Hutchings. I live at 68 Essex Street. Um, I wanted to communicate with you tonight and, uh, express my support for Order Number 040, an ordinance prohibiting the sale of animals, or most animals, in pet stores, uh, that will be before you later this evening. Uh, this ordinance is an important piece of preventative legislation, uh, ensuring that pet shops will not be able to sell most animals in Beverly. Pet shops are too often, uh, able to sell animals bred humanely, uh, bred and inhumanly treated, uh, in commercial breeding facilities. Additionally, the pet shop model facilitates the purchase of pets as impulse buys that often leave new owners with responsibilities and costs for which they are unprepared. There are many responsible breeders of, uh, multiple, uh, breeds and types of animals across the region that allow families to find pets of all sorts. These breeders are far more likely to make sure that potential pet owners are aware of all of the responsibilities that come with different animals and breeds, thus reducing the number of animals that are surrendered, abandoned, or neglected. Uh, so again, I would like to encourage you all to, uh, vote in support of this ordinance. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hutchings. Thanks for being here with us as well. We do have some time before our first public hearing, so we'll go to, um, our agenda and work through some of our routine business before we come to 7:30. And I will note that for both of the public hearings, if there are members of the public who are watching, intending to come in and speak, or folks who are here and wish to speak, there are signup sheets. Uh, Ms. Dupont, are they over by the window?
Yes.
On the table over by the window, and you can add your name to the signup sheet for the public hearing you wish, which you wish to speak. And we will also take those public speakers in the order they are signed up. So we'll go to acceptance of minutes of previous meetings. We have one set of meeting minutes that we can approve this evening. This is the minute, set of minutes from our regular City Council meeting, January 21st, 2025. Is there a motion to approve that set of minutes?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries 9-0, and those are approved. Thank you. Ms. Dupont, let's go to Communications from His Honor, the Mayor, please.
Okay. Order Number 44, a gift from the University of Massachusetts Digital Equity Partnership for the Council on Aging, which includes a fax machine, an Apple iMac, a printer, and a smart board, a total value of $4,929.42.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order Number 45, a grant for a $25,000 firefighter safety equipment grant from the EOPSS and DFS to purchase turnout gear for the Beverly Fire Department.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order Number 46, appointment Nicole Dove, 24 Pierce Avenue, to serve on the Veterans Advisory Committee.
Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services.
Order Number 47, reappointment of Chuck Clark, 55 Juniper Street, to serve on the Veterans Advisory Committee.
Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services.
Reappointment, Robert Laws, 245 Elliott Street, to serve on the Veterans Advisory Committee.
Please refer that also to the Committee on Public Services.
Reappointment, Jonathan Salt, 66 PW Haskell Street, to serve on the Parking and Traffic Commission.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order Number 50, reappointment Sergeant Dana Nicholson to serve on the Parking and Traffic Commission.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order Number 51, reappointment of Captain Jacob Krailing to serve on the Parking and Traffic Commission.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs as well.
Order Number 52, Hensley Elsie, 7 Blake Street, Hyde Park, to serve as a constable in the city of Beverly.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs. I should have caught that one before. Thank you, Ms. Dupont.
Order Number 53, grant, an $8,500 grant from the Department of Fish and Game, Division of Marine Fisheries Clean Vessel Act program to support the free seasonal pump-out boat service, May through October.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order Number 54, reappointment Michael Murphy, 43 Fairview Avenue, to serve on the Registars of Voters.
Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services.
Order Number 55, the 2025 Capital Expenditure Plan pursuant to the City Charter.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property. Let's go to Communications from other city officers and boards, please.
Order Number 56, reappointment, President Flowers, to waive the residency for Carl Yumijin, 21 Tops Hill Road in Wenham, to serve on the Beverly Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee.
Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services.
Order Number 57, Counselor Spang, a request for Public Services Committee meeting in regards to Charnock Street.
Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services as well.
Order Number 58, Counselor St. Hilaire, Beverly Audit Committee Recommendations.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property. Let's go to Communications, Applications, and Petitions, please.
Order Number 59, from National Grid, a petition to install 85 feet of new duct bank.
Please refer that to the Committee on Public Service. Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services to set a public hearing.
Order Number 60, from National Grid, a petition to install seventy-five feet of new duct bank.
Please also refer that to the Command Public Services to set a public hearing. We have some unfinished business from previous meetings that will remain there on our agenda for upcoming meetings. And under motions and orders, Order Number 43, this is a proposed ordinance amendment to amendify municipal officers. That's going to be referred back to Legal Affairs for this evening's subcommittee work. So Order 43 will be referred back to Legal Affairs. Ms. Dupont, we might have time to take up the reading of Order 40 before we have to stop for a public hearing?
Certainly.
So this is a first reading on Order 40, and it is available for a first vote this evening. There are two orders under motions and orders, both for first readings, both available for a first vote. Ms. Dupont, we'll start with this one.
Order Number 40 of 2025, amend Chapter 117, Animals, to add Section 16, restrictions on the sale of animals to prohibit pet shops from the sale of any live amphibian, reptile, bird, or mammal. Pet shops will be allowed to provide space for the display of animals available for adoption from an animal care facility or animal rescue organization, but are prohibited from receiving a fee for providing such space. Violations would be punished by a fine of $300. The full text of Order Number 40 can be found at the City Clerk's Office at 191 Cabot Street in Beverly, Massachusetts, Monday through Wednesday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., Thursday from 8:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m., and Friday from 8:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And this was published in the Sale News on February 3rd, 2025.
Thank you, Ms. Dupont. Counselor Rotendo or Counselor Spang, this is your proposed ordinance. Anything that you'd like to say before we take a motion for a first vote? Kimberly wants you to unmute your microphone, but since you said you think you're all set, I guess we'll just save your meeting for next time. Thank you. Counselors, is there a motion to approve Order 40? This is for a first vote. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? That carries nine zero, and that will be available for a second vote and final passage at our next regular meeting. That does bring us to 7:30, so we'll hold off on a first reading on Order 41. We will have that this evening, but we will go to our first posted public hearing. This is on Order Number 34, posted for 7:30 p.m. Ms. Dupont.
Order Number 34, 2025, the City of Beverly ordered that the City Council hold a public hearing on Monday, February 3rd, 2025, at 7:30 p.m. at 191 Cabot Street, Third Floor, Council Chambers, relative to a transfer request of $218,000 from FY25 Reserve for the collective bargaining 11324/57810 into Police Department budget as a result of recently agreed upon Beverly patrolman contract. And this was published on January 24th of 2025.
Thank you very much. I see that our City Finance Director, Mr. Ailes, is at the podium and ready to go. And also, our Assistant City Solicitor, Jesse Dole, is here as well. Thank you, Mr. Dole. Mr. Ailes, we'll turn it over to you to get the public hearing started.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, Counselors. Similar to previous orders that you've seen over the last month, this order is requesting a transfer from the Reserve for Union Negotiations into the Police Department to fund costs associated with a recently agreed upon memorandum of understanding or memorandum of agreement between the City and the Patrol Officers Union. The amount requested, as noted in Mr. Perry's memo, as well as the order, or communication, I should say, from the mayor, is for $218,000 to be transferred. And Mr. Dole is here as well to answer specifics about the MOA and what's contained in there. However, that was also forwarded, should have been part of the packet that was received by the council from the administration. So happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ailes. Mr. Dole, anything that you wanted to add, or you're available for questions? Mr. Perry, was there anything that you wanted to add before we go to questions or comments from the council?
Yes. Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. Quickly, I wrote to you last week on the components of the contract. But from a financial perspective, as Mr. Ailes indicated, they're looking for a transfer of $218,000. We've already agreed on some other contracts, as I articulated in my memo. There are sufficient funds in the account to pay for this. If you do pass this, as well as pass the second one, I think you have it at 7:45, based on my calculation, there'll be $153,038 left in that account for reserve for negotiations. So, Madam President, I recommend adoption of the mayor's proposal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perry. Counselors, are there questions or comments? Counselor Spang?
Thank you. I have one question about the increase in the rate for paid details. I understand that the, a number of details end up getting paid by either National Grid or a company that requests details. So does it retroact, will they be paying, covering the difference there? Or is that something that the city is responsible for, if you know?
No, the increase would be paid by the, by the entity requesting the police detail.
Thanks. Thank you, Counselor. Are there other questions or comments from members of the council? Counselor Sweeney?
Thank you, Madam President. I have one general question about the fund, the Reserve for Union Negotiations. So Mr. Perry mentioned about a $150,000 balance. At this point, are there any contracts that have yet to be settled that would require a further transfer from this fund aside from the two that'll be before the council tonight?
Yeah. Great question. Through you, Madam President. The remaining balance, as Mr. Perry noted, assuming these, both these orders are approved, of 153,038, is, that will need to cover the last remaining contract, which still has yet to be ratified for the firefighters' union. At this time, we anticipate needing all of that and likely will need a portion of the Reserve for Unforeseen to round out that contract funding. But we feel there's sufficient available funds in both those areas to cover that. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ailes. That's it for me, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any other questions or comments from members of the council? Counselor Housman?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll direct my question, I guess, first to Mr. Perry. Mr. Perry, my question really is sort of a more global one, or not so specific to these contracts, but taking contracts renegotiating, that have been renegotiated and the council is being asked to approve, as a whole. How does that, in your view, sort of fit into the picture, the broader picture of the city's financial ability to pay going forward? And what kind of strain, if at all, might it put on city budgets, say, over the next several years?
Yeah, that's a great question, Counselor. As you know from your own work on the, bringing up the financial forecast in this conversation, we kind of tried to anticipate some of these costs in the financial forecast. As you know, we are estimating about $3.9 million deficit for the upcoming FY26. I know that the Finance Director and the mayor and their staff are working on that and have whittled that down somewhat. They still get some challenges on that, and I'm sure they'll come with a balanced budget. But yeah, there will be some challenges in FY26 because of the collective bargaining issues. And as you also hopefully recall, and I've articulated last year or so, the FY27 budget here in the city will even be more challenging. I mean, on average, about approximately 75% of all taxpayer costs are for labor and benefits like healthcare and things of that nature. So yeah, we have some challenges. We're just gonna have to work our way through it. But specifically in terms of dollar amount, I think if you refer to the financial forecast, that can answer that question pretty easily for you.
If I may, Madam President. For the, for the members of the public who may be viewing this on BevCam, can you elaborate a little bit on why FY27 might seem to be somewhat more challenging than FY26 coming up?
Yeah, as, one of the factors, as you know, in the current fiscal year, we had some excess levy capacity, as an example. And we used about half of that in the current fiscal year. I think the administration is planning, based on my conversations with them, to use the other half for FY26. We will no longer have excess levy capacity to make that difference up. So that's a huge contributing factor in all that. What we're hopeful and optimistic about is that we'll see how the new growth comes in. It'll, you know, nobody knows yet what that will be. But I'm, you know, we're hoping that may put a hit. But I'd say the number one factor of, one of the reasons why 27 is even larger, has to do with the lack of excess levy capacity.
Thank you very much. Madam President, if I may follow up with Mr. Ailes. Basically the same question, to see if you'd like to add anything to that.
I would just, I would say, yes, I agree with pretty much everything Mr. Perry said. We've known through our forecasting efforts and through our planning and through these contract negotiations, as well as the school contract negotiations, all of them, that there would, there would be some budgetary pressure in out years. And that's why some of the larger contracts that were settled front-loaded some of the costs and increases. So for example, on the school contracts that were recently settled, there were larger market adjustments up front and lesser of a percentage increases in the latter years. And that's a way we kind of designed the contracts or agreed on the contracts to allow for some relief in those out years where we think there might be some budgetary pressure if things don't continue to go the way we've seen them, right? And so, we've been thoughtful about this. We've known it's coming, and we're prepared to handle it. We've got a lot of tools in our tool chest that we've kind of relied on. The excess levy being one, roads and sidewalk, and how we fund that going forward is another. And we've also been able and fortunate to realize some excess revenues that have contributed to our free cash year after year that will likely play a part in all of this as well. But at this point in time, as Mr. Perry said, as we look forward to FY26, we know these contract amounts that we've settled for are manageable. I'm not going to say that there aren't some spending reallocations and things that we need to do internally to infuse some efficiencies into our operations and spending, but they are manageable.
Okay, thank you. I'm all set.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Bowen?
Thank you. Just a quick comment, doesn't impact, you know, supporting the funding. But one question I had had going into reading this was expecting to potentially see a provision about body worn cameras based on the previous memorandum of understanding, agreeing for both sides to take up that issue after the settling of the fiscal year '22 to '24 contract. So I understand that was not part of these negotiations and that there's sort of a sense that that may be taken up by the post commission, so it didn't need to be handled here. But I just wanted to clarify if there was anything else we should be expecting there and whether that's covered under the piece around sort of compensation related to the post standards and any policies that come from them.
Yes, you've identified it. We, without having a crystal ball, my understanding that I'm hearing through the police chief is over the next two years, there are going to be a number of standards issued from the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission regarding many aspects of policing, one of which possibly is going to be body worn cameras. So rather than kind of jump ahead and, without knowing what those standards are going to be and how those standards are going to be implemented, we're sort of, both sides decided to put that on the back burner for now.
Thank you, Mr. Dole. Thank you, Counselor. Counselors, any other questions or comments? There are no public speakers signed up, but were there any members of the public here who wish to speak in this public hearing? Seeing none, I'll close that public hearing, refer that back to Finance and Property for further action this evening. And Ms. Dupont, we might have time to do a reading on Order 41. If you have any, thank you. This is a first reading of Order 41 and available for a first vote this evening.
Order Number 41, 2025, proposed amendment to Chapter 270, Vehicles and Traffic as Follows. 270-41, Parking Prohibited at All Times. Upon the following streets or highways or parts thereof, parking is hereby prohibited at all times. Water Street, South Side, from Lothrup Street to the Ocean. Wellman Street, East Side, 50 feet from Congress Street. Wellman Street, West Side, 50 feet from Congress Street. Wellman Street, East Side, 30 feet from School Street. And this was published February 3rd, 2025, in the paper.
Thank you. Counselor Spang, this was your proposed amendment. Anything you'd like to say before we go to a motion?
Yes, thank you. This is to address a concern from the neighborhood of that emergency response vehicles couldn't always clear that corner. So it is eliminating the ability to park on the corner a little bit further than normal. Our regular ordinance, it's 20 feet, which is about a little over one car length. So this is about two car lengths. And it will enable that, as well as for traffic to flow more freely through the intersection. So thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Counselor Spang. Counselors, is there a motion to approve for a first vote, Order 41? Is there any other further discussion? All those in favor? That carries nine zero, and that is also for a first vote. This order also will be available, like Order 40, for a second reading and final vote at our next regular meeting. Thank you to Counselors Rotendo and Spang for their work on both of those proposed ordinances and amendments that we just heard. So that brings us to 7:45, and that is the time for our other posted public hearing. This is on Order Number 35, so we'll open that one now. Ms. Dupont?
Order Number 35, 2025, City of Beverly ordered that the City Council of the City of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, February 3rd, 2025, at 7:45 p.m. at 191 Cabot Street, Third Floor, Council Chambers, relative to a transfer request of $115,750 into various multiple department budgets to fund costs with the recently settled contract between the City of Beverly and the Beverly Municipal Employees Association. This was published January 24th, 2025, in the newspaper.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ailes, I see you're back at the podium, ready to begin, so we'll go right to you to get this started.
I didn't go too far.
That was wise thinking.
Thank you, Madam President. Similar to the public hearing we just had, this is a request to transfer $115,750 to a variety of departments within our operating budget and the general fund. The reason it's a variety of departments is because the BMEA, the Beverly Municipal Employees Association, has employees in multiple departments throughout our government. And so this will fund the adjustments contained in the collectively bargained memorandum of understanding that was recently ratified by the BMEA. It will cover adjustments that go retro back to July 1, similar to the patrol we just talked about. And it will also cover adjustments through the end of this fiscal year. So again, here with Mr. Dole, if you have any specific questions about the contract or the mechanisms, happy to answer those.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ailes. Mr. Perry, would you like to have a chance to speak on this one?
Sure, Madam President. Very quickly, like the other one, there's sufficient funds to cover it. And as I indicated in my memo, I recommend adoption of the proposal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perry. Counselors, are there questions or comments? Counselor Sweeney?
Thank you, Madam President. I have two questions tied to one provision, Section 7 of the MOA, referring to the mileage reimbursement policy. Could you elaborate on what drove this, why this change was implemented? And then, is this based on any existing policies, if one exists, for the non-union employees?
Thank you. Great question. So historically, the collective bargaining agreement had contained in it provisions for certain positions to receive a stipend for the use of their personal vehicle during the operation of business. What we did is we replaced that with requiring them to go through the already established IRS appropriate mileage reimbursement program. And that actually benefits the employees in a way because when they receive a stipend, that's taxable income. So we have to withhold money from them, so they really don't get the full stipend that was designed to cover costs associated with their vehicle use. It also kind of more properly aligns the payment that they're receiving with the amount of use that they're using on their vehicle in a post-tax way. Because it's a reimbursement, it's not taxable. So it's kind of a win-win.
And just to, just to finish off, we do have an ordinance, we do have a city ordinance that has the same or most, very similar program for non-union employees.
Okay. Thank you both for answering those questions. I appreciate it. That's it for me. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Are there, are there questions or comments from members of the council on this one? Were there members of the public who wish to speak in this public hearing? Seeing none, close that public hearing and also refer that back to the Committee on Finance and Property for further action this evening. And I would entertain a motion to take a brief break for some committee work.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries nine zero, so we'll take about a 15-minute break to do some committee work. We'll have Finance and Property here in Council Chambers, Legal Affairs in the Committee Room, and Public Services in the House. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, so colleagues, I think we'll start with Order 34, which was the public hearing from tonight. This is a budget transfer request of $218,000 from the FY '25 Reserve for Collective Bargaining to the Police Department Budget for the Beverly Patrolman's Contract that was recently settled. We just had an opportunity to ask questions. Any further discussion? Mr. Perry, you guys good? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve Order 34. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved, three to zero. Okay, next we'll move to Order 35. Also, from tonight's public hearings, this is a budget transfer of $115,750 from the FY Reserve for Collective Bargaining into various municipal department budgets to cover costs associated with the Beverly Municipal Association, Employees Association. I would entertain a motion that we approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Okay, approved, three to zero. I'm sorry. Call a question. All in favor? Aye. Approved, three to zero. Don't mean to be presumptuous. Next, we have Order 44. This is a gift from the UMass Digital Equity Partnership Grant for the Council on Aging. It's a bunch of equipment, seems pretty standard. There's no match or anything like that, Mr. Ailes.
I didn't see one.
I didn't see it either. It's a total of about $4,929. I'd entertain a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is approved, three to zero. Okay, Order 45, this is another grant, a $25,000 firefighter safety equipment grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Department of Fire Services for the purchase of boots, coats, gloves, turnout gear for the Beverly Fire Department. I would entertain a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Order 53, this is another grant. Ms. Barrett has been busy, so we have an $8,500 grant from the Department of Fish and Game, Division of Marine Fisheries, Clean Vessel Act Grant Program, support free seasonal pump-out services. I would entertain a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved, three to zero. So Order 55 is a capital expenditure plan. Mr. Perry, Mr. Ailes, is there anything in the charter that specifies what we need to do with this?
What I would recommend, Mr. Chairman, and I, I just got that last Thursday, I traditionally review it and write a memo, so if I could suggest, I'm sure it's fine, but traditionally, at the end of the day, you receive and place and file, but if you could wait till your next meeting?
Yeah, I wanted to have at least some discussion around it.
I will prepare a memo for you by the time your next meeting of my, my thoughts, and then by all means, at that time, if you wish to discuss it, we can certainly do it at that time.
Okay.
If that works for you.
Colleagues, are you comfortable with that approach?
Works for me.
Okay, so we'll hold that for tonight. So Order 58 is the Audit Committee Recommendations from the Audit Committee that I chair and served on along with Mr. Perry, Mr. Ailes. So we met back in January to review requests for qual, I guess responses to a request for qualifications for our annual audit. The committee members were myself, Mr. Ailes, Mr. Perry, Karla Agolovich from the Finance Department, and Emma Pugliesi from the School Department. We're also assisted by Dave Jelenos. I just want to thank all of them for their service on the committee. We narrowed it down from three to two pretty quickly, and then we made a recommendation to move forward with Roselli, Clark, and Associates. Committee had a good discussion, I thought, around bid price and capabilities of the different firms. One of the topics was audit rotation that we talked a lot about. Powers &amp; Sullivan has been our, our audit firm for 27 years. We thought a fresh approach this year. RCA was well-known by Mr. Perry, and he spoke highly of them, so we thought getting a fresh perspective might be a, a good idea, all things being equal. So that was a recommendation of the committee. Mr. Perry, Mr. Ailes, any further comments?
No.
Okay. You wrote a good memo. Thank you. Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just two quick questions. Was Roselli and Clark the low bidder? And if not, did the desire to choose a firm other than CBIZ, who I know you mentioned absorbed Powers &amp; Sullivan?
Correct.
Basically, was the desire to move on to a new firm, did that outweigh bid price? Or was Roselli and Clark also the low bidder?
I would say, Counselor, it was more of a combination. They were the low bidder, but by not a lot.
Okay.
It was a little bit less than the others, the other two, the audit rotation, but there was a whole host of issues that we, that was in Counselor St. Helera's memo there that, that we talked about. You could see the criteria. The bid was won, and, you know, the software and their ability, they had certainly a lot of experience. I'm pleased that maybe Mr. Ailes could comment. I guess he's already met with them with, you know, maybe he can opine a little bit on that, but I guess they had a meeting that went well, and then maybe you should hear from that in a moment. But was all that a factor? All of it was a factor. And I'll be honest with you, the one thing I think the Chair will tell you, I did not anticipate a unanimous vote. I thought it was going to be a split vote, and it was unanimous. So that kind of surprised me, but also pleased me, I think.
Yeah, and I know, I will also concede and say that it is going to be an additional burden on the Finance Department, the new firm, and some education, and, but I think they were supportive of the idea as well, getting some fresh perspective.
The only thing I, thank you for reminding me that maybe Mr. Ailes could comment about his meeting with them, but, you know, when you first start with a new audit firm, you know, there's usually a little more upfront labor associated with this because it's new systems and new procedures, things of that nature. So as I indicated to the Chair, we may have to consider a couple extra bucks there for the staff to work with them, at least in the first year. So we'll see how that plays out, I don't know, but I think it would be wise, if we heard from Mr. Ailes a little bit about how his meeting went and his thoughts.
Please, Mr. Ailes.
Sure. I guess I would comment about the bid price. I mean, that was probably the last factor I considered personally. You know, having been through dozens and dozens of audits, that really isn't a determining factor. What really counts is the firm, their experience, like similar clients, things like that. And when we kind of laid it out, coupled with, you know, there is a, there is a desire even within the Finance Department to, to kind of expand the perspective, right? And so that kind of weighed in as well, and I think ultimately why it was a unanimous decision was because Roselli and Clark, on their own, stood out as a very reputable, well-regarded, they're in a lot of communities in Massachusetts, they're on the forefront of issuing standards and best practices throughout the Commonwealth, and so they're really someone that we view the ability to have a long-term partnership with over the next, you know, few engagements, hopefully, to help get the Finance Department even better than it's operating now, right? That's the goal, so. I did have a meeting with Mr. Clark and the Managing Director, that'll be up and basically doing the engagement. We met with them, went over timeline, transition procedures, all of the, all of the pieces that are really important, but you don't always think about when you think about transitioning such an important relationship in, in, in the city. And so we felt very comfortable that they understood our concerns, our time needs, and they are able to work around it and provide some kind of interesting perspectives on some components that we historically had outsourced in certain ways, then we brought in while Amit was here, Mr. Chiani, and now we're contemplating whether or not going back out with some of them while we have a vacancy there. So anyway, it was a really good discussion, and I really felt like they heard us and, and are going to be a good partner going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
And any discussion or questions? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for the memo and the work.
Yeah, it was fun. As fun as audit committee work can be. So thank you, Mr. Ailes, Mr. Perry. All in favor? Aye. Approved, three to zero. Okay, so I think that, that covers our Finance and Property agenda for tonight. We'll have a further discussion on the capital expenditure plan as we wait Mr. Perry's memo, and we'll go from there. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We'll call the full council back to order following our committee break. Thank you very much, everyone, for that. And we will go to reports from committees, please.
Order number... Order number thirty-four, Committee on Finance and Property, to whom referred the matter regarding a request for a budget transfer of $218,000 from the FY-25 Reserve for Collective Bargaining, 11324/57810, into Police Department budget as a result of recently agreed upon Beverly Police Department patrolman contract. And the vote was to approve, three to zero.
Are there questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. Carries nine zero.
Order number thirty-five, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom referred the matter regarding a request for a budget transfer of $115,750 into various municipal department budgets to fund costs with a recently settled contract between the City of Beverly and the Beverly Municipal Employees Association. And the vote was to approve, three to zero.
Are there questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. Carries nine zero. Thank you.
Order number forty-four, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom was referred the matter regarding a gift from the University of Massachusetts Digital Equity Partnership for the Council on Aging, which includes a fax machine, an Apple iMac, a printer, and a smart board at a total value of $4,929.42. Have considered said matter and beg thee to follow. Approve the request. The vote was three to zero.
Are there questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. Carries nine zero.
Order number forty-five, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom was referred the matter regarding a grant of $25,000 for firefighter safety equipment from the EOPSS and DFS to purchase turnout gear for the Beverly Fire Department. Have considered said matter and beg thee to follow. Approve the request.
Are there questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. Carries nine zero.
Order number fifty-three, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom was referred the matter regarding grant for $8,500 from the Department of Fish and Game, Division of Marine Fisheries Clean Vessel Act Grant Program to support the free seasonal pump-out boat service May through October. Have considered said matter and beg thee to follow. Approve the request.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. Carries nine zero.
Order number fifty-eight, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom was referred the matter regarding Counselor St. Hillier's request, Beverly Audit Committee recommendations. Have considered said matter and beg thee to follow. Approve the request.
Thank you. Counselor St. Hillier, anything that you wanted to mention for the full council about that?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll just reiterate what I said in committee. I just want to thank the committee members, Mr. Perry, Mr. Ailes, Carol Ogolevich from the Finance Department, and Emma Puklecy from the School Department. Mr. Gellino helped us, the procurement director, as well, put out an RFQ. Got three proposals back. We met late January and reviewed the proposals and made a recommendation, move forward with Roselli, Clark, and Associates. A big part of our discussion was around audit rotation and the idea that we'd have essentially the same audit firm for the last twenty-seven years, and it might make sense to get a fresh perspective at this point. Bid price was comparable, and some of the technical capabilities were comparable, but we thought it was the right move. And happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Are there questions or comments on this one? Counselor Bowen.
Thank you. Just a quick comment slash maybe it's a question, but there may not be any more to add than that. But just knowing that this was sort of the first big process of going through the audit since the charter review and charter changes went through, wondered if there were any other learnings, anything else the council should be thinking about as that process now goes into sort of a regular cycle from here on out. I think notable that it gave the opportunity for that discussion about audit rotation, but didn't know if there are any other notable items coming out of it.
I would invite Mr. Perry and Mr. Ailes to comment, but I would just say, I mean, one of the pieces for me was just the not a lot of responses. There are three firms, essentially two that are local, and, you know, to me, that was kind of telling that we had a choice between just a couple of firms. But Mr. Perry, if you have additional comments?
Yeah, I think one of the things that I got out of it, as you know, Counselor, we did a lot of work, a lot of conversation on the charter on this issue. I've been here, just literally had my eighth anniversary yesterday, and we had a really long conversation about it. It wasn't just like the audit firm comes in, does it, there's no... We had a long conversation about issues and internal controls and systems, and we had two or three meetings over the last year, if I'm not mistaken. So I'd say one of the things I got out of it anyways, and Mr. Ailes could opine, of course, but we talked about it, we discussed it, we kicked it around. I thought Carol Ogolevich, who was, you know, on the committee, really brought a whole host of stuff to the table that, you know, would not ordinarily be discussed. So I think it was a good educational process, I think it was good for the city, and I was kind of pleased how it all played out.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Counselor St. Hillier, as well, for your work on that. Any other questions or comments on that one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. Carries nine zero. Good? Yes, thank you.
Sure. Order number ten, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom was referred the matter regarding reappointment of Darlene Wynn to serve on the Beverly Affordable Housing Trust. Have considered said matter and beg thee to follow. Receive and place on file.
Sorry. Other questions or comments about that? Counselor St. Hillier.
Are we not approving her appointment? I guess I'd be curious as to why.
I was going to say I would welcome the chair to...
No, go ahead.
Thank you, Solicitor.
So the request is being withdrawn?
Thank you. That's helpful. Does that help, counselors who had that same question? Helps me as well, thank you. So I would entertain a motion to receive and place on file as recommended. All those in favor? That carries nine zero.
Order number forty-three, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom was referred the matter regarding a proposed ordinance amendment to indemnify municipal officers. Have considered said matter and beg thee to follow. Approve the request.
And this is order forty-three?
It is. So Ms. Dupont, do you want to go ahead and read order forty-three, if you have it handy?
Sure.
And that would allow us to take a first vote on order forty-three. This was under motions and orders on our main agenda, went back to the committee for some further discussion, as folks know, but for folks who are following, it's been recommended, referred back out to the full council, and has been published in the paper and is available for our first vote this evening. Ms. Dupont.
Order number forty-three, 2025, ordered, Chapter sixty-nine of the city ordinances shall be amended to insert the following section. Article three, indemnification of certain officers. Section sixty-nine dash thirteen summarized as follows. An ordinance allowing for the defense and indemnification of elected or appointed municipal officers by reason of any act or omission, excluding certain civil rights violations, criminal charges, or ethics, or conflict of interest charges, if such municipal officers, at the time of such act or omission, was acting within the scope of their official duties or employment, provided, however, that such municipal officers shall provide reasonable cooperation to the city. The full text of order number forty-three can be found at the City Clerk's Office at 191 Cabot Street in Beverly, Massachusetts, Monday through Wednesday, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., Thursday from 8:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m., and Friday from 8:30 a.m. to 1 p.m., and also available online at www.beverly-ma.gov. And the ordinance to take full passage upon publication and final passage, and this was published February third in the newspaper, 2025.
Thank you. Counselor Hausmann, this was your proposed ordinance amendment. Anything that you wanted to say at this point?
No comment.
Thank you. Counselors, is there a motion to approve order forty-three for a first vote? Is there any further discussion or questions? All those in favor? Carries nine zero, and that is for a first vote, so there'll be a final vote on that at our next regular meeting. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Order number thirty-seven, the Committee on Public Services, to whom was referred the matter regarding an appointment for Gina Valonis, 12 Baker Avenue, to serve on the Waste Reduction Committee. Have considered said matter and beg thee to follow. Recommend the council approve the appointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. That carries nine zero, and our thanks to Ms. Valonis, who was here with us this evening as well, for her willingness to serve.
Order number fifty-six, the Committee on Public Services, to whom was referred the matter regarding an appointment from President Flowers, a request to waive residency for Carl Kuyumian at 21 Tops Hill Road in Wenham, to serve on the City Beverly Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Have considered said matter and beg thee to follow. Recommend the council approve the reappointment and approve the waiver of residency. This was taken in two votes in committee.
Thank you. And so this also will need two votes in the full council. And thank you to Solicitor Williams for reminding me that the residency waiver vote will require a two-thirds vote of the council to be approved. So I'd like to take the residency waiver vote first, and that will help establish, if we can go ahead and vote for the reappointment. So, counselors, is there a motion to approve the waiver of residency for this appointment? Any discussion? All those in favor? That carries nine zero. That's more than the two-thirds required, so thank you. And then is there a motion to approve this reappointment? Any discussion? All those in favor? That carries nine zero as well. Thank you.
Order number fifty-nine, the Committee on Public Services, to whom was referred the matter regarding National Grid, petition number 30473249, to install eighty-five feet of new duct bank extending from National Grid property to existing MH1 on River Street, and install a fifteen-foot of new duct bank extending from National Grid property to existing MH2 on River Street. Have considered said matter and beg thee to follow. Set a public hearing for February eighteenth at 7:30 p.m.
I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing as recommended by the subcommittee for February eighteenth, 7:30 p.m. All those in favor? Carries nine zero.
Order number sixty, the Committee on Public Services, to whom was referred the matter regarding National Grid, petition number 30926878, to install seventy-five feet of new duct bank extending from National Grid property to existing MH1-A on River Street. Have considered said matter and beg thee to follow. Set a public hearing on February eighteenth at 7:45 p.m.
I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing as recommended by the subcommittee for February eighteenth, 7:45 p.m. All those in favor? That carries nine zero, and that is our next regular meeting, but I will note, for those who are following at home, it is a Tuesday meeting because of a Monday holiday. Is that it? That's all I got? All right. Thank you. Counselors, any reminders or announcements? Counselor Bowen.
Thank you. One of the items that came to the Public Services Committee tonight was a request to hold a meeting with neighbors to talk about speeding vehicles and pedestrian and bike safety around Charnock Street, Molton, that area. And so we are planning to do that February twenty-fourth at 6:30. That's a typical committee's night. So the Public Services Committee will post that. We'll plan to meet here at 6:30 that evening, and anyone who's watching who's tried to cross there and found it dangerous can come and share their opinions at that point.
Thank you very much, Counselor. So Public Services will have a committee meeting February twenty-fourth at 6:30 p.m. Thank you very much. Counselor Hausmann.
Yes, Legal Affairs tentatively will be meeting next Monday evening, tentatively at six o'clock. We have some folks to invite, and so the meeting will depend in part upon who's able to attend or whether or not they're able to attend. And this is regarding order number thirty through thirty-D, the specialized building code.
Thank you, Counselor. So Legal Affairs, next Monday, 6 p.m., depending on who's able to attend.
Right.
But you're planning for that, hoping for that. Thank you. Any other announcements or reminders for members of the council? Well, I will just mention again, as I said when we just set those public hearings, that for those who are following along, our next regular council meeting is February